Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of Brookline Select Board for...
What day is it?
June 3rd.
June 3rd. June 3rd, rather. The time is 6:32. We're waiting, a few people are coming in, but everybody, all of the board members are now here, either online or, I guess to recap, Gwen Tanza, Guy Tanza, and myself are here in the office. Mark Bills is also here, he's about to join us. And then online and on the phone are Joseph Dutton, Shelby Brimmer, and Bruce Mella. We also have Fact TV streaming this on YouTube and somewhere else. Okay, first, next up is review changes to the agenda, if any. I do not have any changes to the agenda. Gwen, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Bruce, do you have any changes to the agenda?
I just want to talk briefly about the voting of the school of us doing the counting next week.
Okay, why don't we talk about that during Guy's...
Simple one.
Yeah.
Is that cool? All right. Joseph, do you have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Shelby, any changes to the agenda?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Scheduled members of the public, there are none. Unscheduled members of the public, there is no one here in person, nor is there anyone online, which moves us right along to 5A approving the minutes from the May 20th meeting. The few things I have correction wise, Joseph for some reason wasn't included. We'll include him because he was there. And then Gwen noticed under the SLP update, there's a little stray comma in the first paragraph. And then on the second page, there are a few instances of a few words missing the last character, some just little typographical things. We'll get all of those fixed. I have a marked up copy with... Peter is not online with us, but he's gonna view the recording and do the minutes. He has a conflict with a school meeting at the same time. Other than the minor typographical things and adding Joseph that I noted, Bruce, did you see any other changes?
The only thing that's like you, the type of... COVID-19, next to Brimmer, Will was W-I-L, she was W-I-L-L.
Yeah. I got that one.
And then, other than corporate report, business as usual, it was one S.
Yeah, I got that one.
That's all I saw.
Okay. Joseph, any other changes to the minutes? For you?
No.
Shelby, any other changes to the minutes for you?
Uh, no.
Okay. Then I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May 20th meeting as amended. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from May 20th as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved, and I will get those changes to Peter so that he can make them. Or maybe I'll just make them in his P E. Next up is old business, and the first item up is tax collection update. Mr. Tanza, I think we were hoping to just check in and sort of see where things might stand after a couple of weeks.
As of today, we started out with a little over $40,000 in arrears in delinquent taxes, and we're down to about $26,000 right now. So we've collected $14,000, and there's a few other checks that are coming in tomorrow. So we're in the right direction. And when you think that we had over $300,000 of taxes that we had to raise and have a deficit of approximately $25,000, the town is in good shape. But we'll keep trying to get the other people to respond. We gave them until June 15th before we would access any penalties, so hopefully a few more checks will come in.
Great, that sounds very positive. Yeah. Gwen, did you have any other, any follow-up questions on that? Bruce, any follow-up questions for Guy on the collection?
No, no, sounds great. So far so good.
Yeah.
Yes, another question. Guy, in a normal stream of things, in a normal year, where is this as far as delinquent taxes at this time?
Right now, we're probably on par with what we normally are at this time of the year. We're between $25,000 and $30,000 in delinquencies going into the second week of June. And usually by the end of August, the two-month period after the close of the year, we pretty much have most of those taxes, what we have in the last four years, have most of those taken care of. But this year will be a challenge.
Okay. Any other questions, Bruce, or was that it?
No, that's it.
Okay. Joseph, any questions for Guy as far as the tax collection goes?
No.
Okay. Shelby, how about you, any further questions for you?
No, no, I'm done.
All right. Excellent, flying right along, and then we come to SLP update. All right. Bruce?
Very little, the only thing I have to say is we have a problem at Suzie's with the two-street storm, let's try to get them open. And I'm working on it, and I'm probably getting, we're gonna live with Guy, that's the maintenance guy that they have tomorrow, to take a look at it. I feel a lot of equipment registered, I'm hoping it'll free up, but I couldn't get those damn storms open. No big deal, whatever. As far as the... I don't know if I told you that Howard, Oswald, and Olivia are gonna get together, and the sand is on them, we don't have to worry about that. As far as woodchips go, with Mark and David and anybody else who wants to participate, we're starting to think about scheduling a side way for an hour and a half or two, whatever, to logistics to do it. I realized one thing, bummer. She closed everything in with the fence. So Guy's not gonna really get it, it'll distract her.
But wait, 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 the... No, she hasn't closed in the playground equipment outside of her... Well, maybe we should clarify this. In the past, where we have put woodchips around the...
Swing sets.
The swing sets and the stuff down in the opposite direction from her enclosed area, we've never done anything within her enclosed... Those are all her... We do it on the things that we own, which are the installed large stuff.
Oh, boy, okay. Oh, I didn't know that. Ooh, I don't know how to handle that one, guys. I gotta commit that one to the... Not the woodchips, whoa, they're sitting right next to the church. And like I said, the whole area of hers enclosed over the fence. So we, we're gonna tell her now we're not gonna do it?
Well, it's not, I mean, sorry, I guess we should have had a... I mean, I thought everybody was on the same page about what we actually put woodchips around. I mean, the playground equipment that we always talk about and have always talked about...
Down below.
The stuff down below that is actually our responsibility.
At that time, dude, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I just totally jumped on the non-responsibility trip in a hurry.
Yeah.
There wasn't...
I mean...
Didn't know what I already said, now I'm kind of in a body.
Well, sorry, Guy.
There was, it looked like a yard of sand was delivered on the blacktop, and I think they may be using that in the enclosed part of their facility, you know?
They had a sand box.
So I don't know.
Right. To be honest, I'm not even sure what they have within that enclosed area that would require woodchips under it.
They have swing sets, and I think they have a dome, a geodesic dome, and other playground equipment that the kids go and play around with. And I guess they would take, they would have the woodchips in there to soften it, to comply with state standards, I would imagine.
Well, that's their responsibility.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't necessarily have a problem with them using some of the woodchips for that, but we're not gonna distribute those. I mean, what we have to do for our insurance purposes is make sure that the equipment that we are responsible for is safe. So we have to do, we have to do something, either dragging and freshening up or putting more woodchips down on the stuff that we have.
I think it's a minimum of six inches.
Yeah, right. I mean, let's... Yeah, I don't know, we have to have, go back and have a separate conversation with them then.
Yeah.
I mean, unless... I mean, don't they use, don't their kids use the big equipment as well? And...
The other equipment?
The our equipment, I'm gonna call it, the larger equipment in the lower field.
Yeah, they use...
So don't they have concerns about...
The swing set, that's why I get you going down the hill. But there's a couple of things in there that...
Yeah, there's a swing set, there's a tetherball thing, there's...
Jungle gym.
Jungle gym, or...
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, I guess I would suggest we go back and I'm, we can arrange, I'm fine to come out there and meet with you and them, and we can talk about...
You wanna do that?
I don't know. Sorry?
I'm sure not excited about it.
Well, no, it's fine, I just, yeah, I mean, it's, for lots of reasons, we're not gonna get into taking care of, taking care of their, of what they have.
But that's what, you understand, I'm right with you. It's really easy, especially how, I have to say this politically correct, people that are not familiar with maintenance, I'll put it that way, to tag on anybody that they'll get to do the work. But what you said, what you're implying, what you're kinda stating, is that we have a limited responsibility to that place. Their use is their use. It's kinda like you renting a house and calling over your landlord to do your backyard. It's the same thing, I get where you're coming with it. So I apologize for sticking my neck out, I didn't realize what I was doing.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I mean, really what it boils down to is they own that playground that's enclosed, and all of it. So they have the responsibility for whatever there is. We own the playground equipment that's in the lower part, and that's why we have a responsibility for it. It predates them being there. I mean, maybe it's a little confusing because they, of course, took over for Tina, who had built that whole other part, so they might also be somewhat confused, I guess. But, yeah, why don't we, why don't we arrange to have another conversation with them, and we'll figure something out.
Okay, David.
Can I just...
Joseph, yeah, sorry, yeah, Joseph, I have a lot, yeah, I wanna give everybody else a chance too, yeah. Joseph, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry to you, David, but Tina didn't install any of that lower playground equipment in years.
Yeah, sorry, I'm talking about the upper playground. The enclosed, the one that's enclosed.
Between the school and the church.
Between the school and the church.
Yeah, yeah, and then the other, the lower stuff has been there for years or so.
Yeah, exactly, and that was my point. That stuff we as a town own and are responsible for, as opposed to the playground that's between the school and the church, which is owned and responsible of the renter. Yeah.
Oh, and...
Yeah, I think I might have, I might have been confused, confusing when I was saying it, or I think we're on the same page.
Yep. I was also curious, I couldn't remember if we paid for the woodchips.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we were intending to, because...
It's our responsibility.
We thought they were going somewhere else.
How much, I don't recall how much we did pay for them.
How much were they?
How much did we pay for the woodchips?
I don't remember. It was a couple of years ago anyway, I had to ask Guy or ask somebody if I was on part of it.
Oh, they're old woodchips that have been sitting there for a couple of years?
No, these are new woodchips.
No, 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 no. I don't think I've got what was done previously.
I think the question is, how much are we paying Tom Bloom for the woodchips that he's just delivered, though?
Two hundred bucks, two loads, a hundred bucks each.
Looking for how much woodchips?
Two truckloads.
Or two loads. How many yards?
Probably 12 yards. I think Tom's truck is like six or seven yards, maybe.
I'm not worried, it's situated, we'd never have to do it again for many years.
Yeah.
That was my intent.
I think they fluff it up.
I would just, my feeling is that that's a lot of money for woodchips, because you can, you can get them for free, kind of. And I apologize if I didn't speak about this earlier, but that's, that's an awful lot of money for woodchips. And if it's going, as we've discussed, for their playground equipment, maybe there's a way that they just use the woodchips, and we just make some of that money back with like one of the other little bills that we... Don't we like pay them back for part of the phone bill or something?
I'm glad you brought that, because I meant to recall to respond to Sarah's email today, they asked her if she's been taking that fifty bucks out of month for that bill. Yeah, I think you're really kinda split in half at this point, Joseph, because I've already committed us to do it. So we're gonna have to like, well, now we're changing everything, they wanna change everything around. But...
Well, I'll... I'll say though, Bruce, that, I mean, it's, I agree with Joseph in that, I mean, if... Let's go have a conversation with them, because they should have understood this, quite frankly, even if you didn't. They, my feeling is, they should have understood what their responsibilities are for the equipment that they own. So we can, we can work something out.
I wouldn't be taking advantage of either. And I'll explain this, that Olivia's been there for years. So it's not as if she left with Tina, she was running the show. So she is aware of all this. So I'm getting this thing where I'm starting to get the feeling that I'm starting to be used a little bit. I'll give you one, that's one example, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm just...
Bruce, I don't understand.
What other thing? That she wanted me to change, change the faucet, to go spray her in? And I started thinking about it, now I'm gonna drag my head, I need to freaking faucet to... Wait a minute, I don't want for her. So I'm getting, the point I'm trying to make is, I said, Tom, is I have to be careful that I leave, are not taking advantage of.
Okay, well, don't worry, when we, when we have, when you and I have the follow-up conversation with them about it, not to overdramatize, but I will be the bad guy in this situation. I am more than happy to do that.
I've got narrow shoulders, I can't do it.
Yeah. Sorry, Gwen, Gwen has a point that she wants to make, hang on.
Joseph, as far as the woodchips are concerned, there is a specific... You can't just use any kind of woodchips under a swing set for kids to play in. In other words, it can't be pine, because that's pitchy. It's gotta be certain kind of woodchip because they're kids, was my understanding. And we've got woodchips from Thomas before, is that not correct?
Yeah, I think, I think he chipped logs and without the leaves, without the pine needles, which makes a little difference there.
But I was under the understanding, it couldn't just be any kind of woodchips because some tree had ants and bugs and blah, blah, blah. So I thought it had to be a specific...
There are species, like hemlock doesn't generally have bugs in the bark.
Right. So I thought that was the reason we went with Thomas, is because he knew what kind of chips we needed.
Yeah.
And we bought them from him for years.
Yeah, I know that he delivered, which probably is a delivery fee. I was thinking, after hearing this conversation, maybe we could split it with the daycare.
Yeah, I think we can...
Theirs is half, and work's is half, they can hear it half, we can hear it.
Yeah, we'll work something out that's, that's fair and, you know, minimize her from stance as best situation we can. But let's, let's have a conversation with them, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Shelby, did you have any other thoughts on that, since everybody else has weighed in?
No, I think you guys thoroughly covered it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Shelby, that's all right.
So what else, what else on the billboard, Bruce?
Nothing, I don't think so. Don't touch it.
Okay, cool, thank you.
I don't know.
Okay, moving on to 6C COVID-19 survey. Shelby, I think you were gonna take a pass at coming up with something?
Yeah, and I did not realize till I sat down to do this that I hadn't shared it. So I did just share it to you guys, but obviously you might not have your computer in front of you. So I can just kinda read through, I just kinda came up with four questions and left them pretty open-ended. I don't think that if we send this out, we're gonna get an overwhelming response. So I don't think that reading people's answers or like going through the information and gathering is gonna be that difficult. Like, I considered doing something more multiple choice, but I think that, I didn't really, I didn't think that would really give us a lot, you know, valuable information. It was just like, oh, did this affect you financially or this? Like, if you kinda know, so I left it more in brief form. Can anyone see it right now? Yeah?
Give me a second, and I'll, I'll open it.
Can I get it? Come in here just for a second?
Yes.
A new book has already sent one out. I don't know if you guys got the card right now. I love this fellow. Do you need any help? Do you need, uh, ticket dogs, sort of cats, or that? There's a bunch of dogs, did anybody get these cards? I got one of them out last week, can I have that?
Oh, yeah, I saw that. That wasn't, I'm not, I wasn't thinking, you'll, we'll read through what I was thinking. I wasn't thinking anything like that specifically.
Okay. Okay.
Hang on one sec, I'm just gonna share this for anybody that is on the online.
Yeah, the new book one seemed like they actually had, like, they had the staffing to kinda like be proactively coordinating things and monitoring them. And I think for now, I'm just kinda interested to see what the community might be needing and how they're, how they're affected, and then we can determine if there's anything in our capacity that we can provide, whether it's facilitating something or... But I don't, I think I wouldn't probably go as far as, I don't know, just being, you know, asking if somebody needs something, you know, offering a tangible... At the moment, just 'cause A, you don't really know what people need, and I don't think that us as a board really could need that, you know, someone was like, oh, yeah. By the way. I think that we need to figure, we could figure out from this survey potentially if there's something we could do, but...
Okay, Shelby, do you wanna, I mean, I'm sharing it for people around, but of course Bruce is not online in this, so do you wanna just read through the four questions?
Yeah, sure. So the first one's just how has COVID-19 most impacted you and/or the members of your household? The second one, what are the biggest concerns for you and/or your household moving forward? What services and supports, I gave examples of state, community, organizations, nonprofit, or informal, have you accessed during this time? And is there anything that could be facilitated by the town that you feel that would be beneficial to you and/or members of your household as our community continues to COVID-19?
Okay. That's good to me. That's simple.
Shelby, can I ask, how do you envision this being sent out to people? Like, how would we get this to them?
I was just thinking, start with the listserv and see if we get any information back. I don't, I'm not sure, if we, if we do the listserv, which has, how many people are on the listserv, again, Julie?
Hundred and twenty-ish.
Yeah. So if we don't get, I mean, if a hundred and twenty of the population, if it gets out to around a hundred and twenty, which is a pretty decent chunk, and we're not getting any responses, I'd say that it probably wouldn't be worth doing the mailing necessarily. If we start seeing some interest in it, then maybe we could consider, you know, getting it out to people who don't have email or the listserv. But I guess I had like, I was just thinking about it as sending it out on there, but I guess anyone else had another idea?
Front porch forum, you can send it out there for Brookline residents.
I'm posting front porch forum, and then anyone who sees that could respond.
Uh-huh.
Uh-huh, I guess...
And specify or reply, I suppose.
Yeah, right.
Could reply, you know?
And the town stuff, right. And see how you respond to it.
So would you, would, would this ask for people's name or address or information, or would it be completely confidential? How would that, how do you envision that working?
For them to respond?
Well, I guess they'd have to have an email, I guess.
Yeah, if they're gonna respond by email, obviously, yeah, they would, they'd at least see their email. I mean, if somebody wanted to, I mean, I don't, I don't know that anybody, I don't feel like any of these things would make anyone feel like they couldn't... None of this feels contentious enough that anyone would feel like they couldn't share their name, I hope.
Yeah, right.
But if it did, I mean, if you guys feel that was important, we could provide an option to drop off anthems or something, just at the, you know, at the town office. But I don't think that that would, I don't see someone going through that effort. I feel like most people would just respond, if they have an interest in responding, they would probably be willing to share.
Yeah.
I mean, do you think we should verify address, or just have them also give their address so we can confirm that they're actually community members?
No. I think right now, aren't you just trying to get a, kind of a feeling for it? I don't think we really need to know people's names. You may have no response at all.
Well, I mean, at least, or at least names, I guess, that we know, so that like when we review it, if a name doesn't seem familiar, we, we know if it's not, it's not somebody from, I don't know, Williamsville who responded to it if we posted on front porch forum.
I don't think, I don't, I think those people that are gonna respond will put their name down anyway, because they're responding.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a fair point.
This is a Brookline rep, that's right?
Yeah, if we did, if we agreed to do this and I posted it on front porch forum, I would obviously specify for Brookline.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't we just go around and give a... Gwen, how do you feel about the idea of sending this out to people through email and maybe front porch forum?
Well, I think right now, email and the front porch forum is the way to go, because we have 400 people at 50 cents. I mean, we're trying to save money, and that's a lot of postage to not even probably get a response. So I think, like Shelby said, it's a good way to see if we get anything.
We might also be...
Facebook.
Hang on, Cypress.
So we might also, if we get permission from the treasurer, we might be also to set that in as an insert in the tax bill for 2021. If it's just a little, a little postcard kind of thing. I don't like to set, you know, a precedent of asking for information in tax bills, but if it's, if it's worthwhile, if it's something the select board thinks might be advantageous, that's just another avenue of thought.
Well, let's, let's, any further thoughts, Gwen? We'll keep going around. Okay. Bruce, what's your feeling about this? Whether we send it out, and do we just do it email?
I think the thing Shelby said, and I also think if, like Shelby said, if it appears as if we're getting good response, we can consider this step forward. But I think I like the idea that Guy came up with, or Guy came up with the insert idea, if we can do that. We can save some money by doing it. You know, when are the tax bills gonna go out, like, at the end of July?
They're scheduled to go out 30 days before the first payment. The first payment due August 15th right now, but that...
By July, okay.
Yeah, but those dates are starting to reach about.
Okay, that works.
Somebody, somebody's got a lot of background noise, if you could move, if you had somebody on in the background?
I have my, I have my nails and stuff long.
It's the radio or something.
Okay. Joseph, what's your thinking about this at the moment?
I think that it's pretty good questions, and it's definitely worth posting to the listserv and to the front porch. I don't really think that it's, that we should be spending money, because we're not really putting this out there looking to provide some sort of service or... to provide some sort of service or relief of any sort. We're just trying to get a feel for, uh, what's going on in the town. So I, I don't think that, um, there would really be any, there's not necessarily any benefit associated with spending money to distribute this, that I see.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll echo that, I, I agree completely that, yeah, I mean, I think, I think these questions are a good opportunity to get a feel for things, and to Shelby's point and your point and others. The listserv provides enough people to get a feel. And then, you know, if there's some follow-up that down the road, we decide we might want to do, there are other options. But for now, it seems sensible to me to just, to just do it as an email. I'm not even sure it makes sense to post it on front porch forum, but I suppose there's not necessarily any harm in doing that. Okay, so Shelby, um, or you, any, any further information you need from any of us to make that happen?
No, just if there was any, if there was, I mean, if there was a, if there's something that you feel like I could be, something we could be asking differently or more or less, I mean, I'm open to feedback or just through these together, so I'm not like, I'm not gonna be upset if somebody wants to tweet something, I'm not, not emotionally attached to it the way it is. Um, but, um, but if, but if no one has an issue, then I, I would feel comfortable if you guys are gonna be submitting it to Julie and starting with the listserv and seeing where we go from there.
I'll just go around one more quick time, I mean, I don't, I mean, it's a little hard, I'm just sort of reading it for the first time, I haven't given it a whole lot of thought, but at the same time, I'm not sure of it. For myself, I, I'm not really sure what else we necessarily should or would want to ask, so it, it seems like a good starting place for me. Gwen, do you have any tweaks or anything?
I, it's a good starting point.
Okay. Uh, Joseph, anything about this that you think should be changed, or that you might want to add to at this point?
Nope.
Okay, Bruce, how about you?
I'm good, actually, like I said, I agree with what Shelby's trying to, I think, of all of her, all of her ideas on it's a board.
Okay. All right?
Can I get that in writing?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, he didn't write, he heard from the word.
Okay, great. Um, that sounds good, so thank you Shelby for taking that and running with it, and we'll, and I guess the question would be, are you gonna have people send responses to your email address?
I think it makes sense, otherwise it has to get filtered back through Julie every single time someone might have our response.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, that wouldn't be an option, but yeah, I guess, I just meant whether.
Yeah.
I could, I could be pissy about that.
Yeah, I, I think I would just have it come back to you, to your email.
And then, yeah, it was either that, or I was gonna try and see if I could do like the Google form and put the link to the Google, to the questionnaire in there. But I also wasn't sure if that would throw people off who maybe aren't super tech lovers.
Yeah, I, I think you, I think you're right, that maybe just making it as simple as, so people who can deal with an email can deal with it. It's not like there are so many questions that you need.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Okay, that's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, I would do that, I think you're right, just make it, keep it simple for people to be as encouraging for people as possible. Okay, any last comments on that before we move on?
Yep.
All right, thanks Shelby. All right, moving on to six D green up day recap. Green up day has come and gone, it was Marcus here, and he can attest as well. It was the most mellow green up day we've had in a very, very long time. Tom Brooks says it's the, when he was going around doing a bunch of stuff, it's the cleanest he's seen the town since he's lived here.
He says the cleanest?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, there were, there's, I mean, we, we're all kind of speculating, it's because less people are out driving around in their cars, throwing stuff out their windows.
People were quarantined, you know, early on, and now, so.
Yeah.
That's what I think, I think that.
Yeah, I mean, it, we, you know, we.
Tom Clark expanded his, uh, his, uh, responsibilities.
Yeah, I mean, we ended up, there were, there were definitely things that we would do and have done in years past that we didn't necessarily do. We didn't go after some of the big trash dump areas on Ellenware or on Putney Mountain, although I'll say I walked all of Putney Mountain on Sunday, and there were really not very many big trash dumping areas. Um, there's less there. We covered almost all the roads that we normally would cover, and we had probably half of the bags, I'm gonna guess, and considerably less tires than we normally have.
That's a beautiful.
So, that's all very positive, I suppose we may go back to reality eventually, but, um, thankfully, it was, it was pretty straightforward. So, a big thank you to Mark and Tom, and Tom's whole family, as well as lots of other people who gathered stuff all over and dealt with the challenges of, you know, having to wear gloves more religiously and everything else. It was, it was a good, it was a good event. I'm gonna send out a thank you email to people through the listserv, and one of the things I'll be saying in the email is, this is my last green up day. So I'm gonna be searching for someone to take it over, because I'm not going to do it.
I thought you didn't do it.
What's that?
I thought you didn't do it this time.
No, he did do it.
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
But this is the last one.
In my stupidity.
That's okay. Um, okay, so that's that, uh, moving on to seven new business, we have no new business. So we'll jut right to summary update reports, Mr. Tanza. Uh, my thing, among other things, we wanna have a little chat about the school stuff, but what else, what else going on for you?
Okay, well, we've had absentee ballot requests, we've had seventeen so far, and it's costing the town a dollar forty for every absentee ballot that we send. Uh, that's the postage, seventy cents for us to send it, and seventy cents for the respondent to send it back to us. But at any rate, the school budget vote is the tenth of June, and right now, it's been batted around a few different ways. But it appears that we're gonna do the co-mailing as we did before, but maybe the day after. So basically, what we're gonna do at this point is we're gonna count the ballots to make sure that the same amount of ballots we have matched the same amount of people that have checked off on the entrance list, and that's all we have to do. So I don't think it takes more than a half hour. So if we have four to six people, that would be helpful, and we could get out of here by seven thirty, eight o'clock in the morning, I mean, I'm sorry, eight o'clock at night. I'm gonna put the ballots in the vault, and they're gonna be brought over to Anita Bean at Townsend on the following day. That's the plan right now.
Okay, and so just to recap, the plan is for that night to count the ballots, starting at seven o'clock. Gwen will be here, I will be here, Shelby will be here, and Bruce will be here. So the four of us will count while Guy supervises. Is everybody still okay with that? Bruce, you had something you wanted to discuss though about the ballot counting?
Yeah, I'm not a little problem with the close proximity thing. And I don't wanna be an SOB at that.
That's.
So I'm trying to figure a way, how many ballots are there usually, Guy, roughly?
Sixty, seventy.
Uh, around between sixty and eighty, but the bottom line is that we have masks, we have sanitizer. The people who come in here will have to be wearing a mask, the people who, before they even grab a ballot, will have to sanitize their hands. We have all those in, in motion right now. The bottom line is, there's enough room in the office that you can take twenty-five ballots and go in one corner, someone can take twenty-five and go the other. It shouldn't take more than a half hour, but, you know, I don't feel comfortable.
But Bruce, if you're not, sorry, but Bruce, if you're not comfortable with it, and that's totally understandable, then you shouldn't come and do it.
No.
Okay? We can, we can, we can completely work without it, that's fine, don't worry about it.
I won't do anything to help it.
Yeah, I know, but if you're not comfortable, don't be comfortable, we have to be, yeah.
You're, you're off the hook.
Yeah, don't worry about it then. Wait, nobody, none of us, none of us wants somebody to do something that they're uncomfortable doing, or that they think might be better.
I'm telling you, if you put it outside. Why don't you have a little table outside, you put twenty-five or fifty on there?
Yeah, I mean, honestly.
I have a ninety-five mask.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, 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 I understand, I just mean, by the time we do that, one of us can just count those twenty-five after we're done, it, it, that, so that's fine, don't worry about it. It's, that's not a problem at all.
What is putting them outside do?
So, Guy?
Yes.
What else is, um, did you have other things?
Basically, no, that's it, uh, the, the dog, the delinquent dogs now have been, uh, I've sent a copy to everybody, there's eleven people, eleven delinquent dogs who have not signed up for their license. Uh, one owner seems to own a number of them. There was also a response from Dottie in regards to that owner. So, but at this point, it's after May thirty-first, we've been extremely lenient. We have not filed any late charges for anybody, for any dog this year, and believe me, they came in way after April first. But the bottom line is now the fifty-dollar fine will kick in as of June first. So you have the list as required by law, Guy has the list as the animal control officer, uh, it's in your hands now.
And if you happen to see somebody on there, you know, you can let them know that if they don't have the dog anymore, they need to call the office. So we can take them off the list, otherwise they're fined.
And that's, uh, that's pretty much it, it's been busy, you know, we're doing the things, Gwen is doing the, uh, the books, the land record books, and, uh, we get a lot of telephone requests, a lot of telephone questions, and it keeps us busy.
All right, thanks Guy.
Yep.
Um, moving on to highways and roads, Mr. Biddles, how are you?
I'm doing well.
You wanna maybe wheel yourself a little bit closer, it's a little hard for these guys to hear something.
Okay, uh, since I've last seen everybody, uh, we made it through mud season, took down the road posted signs. It was an extended mud season, so we ended up doing a little bit more this year than prior years, uh, putting down crushed gravel to make the roads passable, keeping them scraped off, and, uh, so as time goes on here, the roads are drying up well, and we've been applying new fresh gravel to the road surfaces, uh, helping to create a, a crown to the middle of the road, um, which is state standard, and, uh, just bringing the roads up to a, a better maintainable surface. On my next, I've gone through all the roads, uh, you know, it took them a little bit longer to come around, but, uh, my next scraping with the, with the roads uh, will be raked smoother, and then we're gonna ask if the town of New Fane will uh, come over and put, apply chloride to the roads so that, that they'll stay moist and compacted to hopefully lessen the scraping for the summer months. Yeah, we've kind of been, uh, holding back a little bit, not knowing where we're going with the, the virus on certain projects. At some point, I guess we're gonna talk about, uh, paving on Hill Road, whether to wait another season or, or follow through with our prior plan. So, that's still up in the air, we have some grants that are still, uh, on hold. I didn't, we ordered, through the budget, we have a certain amount of, uh, money sat aside for maintenance, and uh, this year, I ordered some parts through John Deere, and I've started, uh, putting those parts on the grader, just things that have worn that, um, are being tightened back up, the steering. We also have had some extreme winds come through all our towns here, and we've had, uh, numerous trees, we've been, I feel fortunate that we haven't had more power damages and more tree damage due to the high winds we've had. So I, I have come out, uh, and removed trees from our roads. We also are missing a couple of road signs, uh, I think somebody's, um, taking our road signs again, uh, we're missing Ellenware Road sign and, and Mountain Road, uh, sign. And, um, so I'm placing an order to get those back in place. I did have a, an old Mountain Road sign that I'm temporarily using until we get the new one. And, and stop signs, I've temporarily put up stop signs, uh, for the ones that were stolen. And, basically, that's where I'm at now. We do have some projects that I was wondering where we were at with the budget for this fiscal year, I, I know probably if, if we followed through with, uh, I have some tree removal, uh, that I would like to do throughout town. We have some dead elm trees, uh, coming uphill road from the river, which are slowly dwindling down, uh, and there's certain areas, uh, trees of the same status dead standing. And I know that up until now, a lot of these crews and companies that will probably bid on this, uh, haven't been able to work to do that, and so I'm not sure, we'll probably end up waiting for our new fiscal year and fit it into the contractor, that part of the budget. We do have one project that, uh, I've talked to the power company about removing some trees, which I was in hopes they would do the removal because they're near power lines, but after talking with, uh, their representative, he assured me that those trees were just outside of their reach, so it'll be something we have to deal with on our own. I have about twenty-five trees, uh, that I would like to remove to dig back the roadside, and then it's all ledge. This is on Hill Road, and, um, it'll make for a safer corner for vision. And also, the ledge will have to be, uh, chiseled with a, with a hydraulic hammer to create a ditch. The water now, for years, has, uh, seeped down to the road in the winter and, and created ice. And so at some point, I would like to, uh, talk to the select board about, um, being able to put this small job out for bid for road improvements. And so, um, for now, I'm just doing general maintenance and, and keeping the, the roads, uh, you know, as good as we can until, uh, things move ahead.
Um, what if, um, I'm gonna make a, make sort of a loose suggestion, what if we put an agenda item for the next meeting to just talk about road projects? And maybe,
Okay.
you know, I'll invite Archie to join us as well, and maybe you guys could put your heads together in advance of that on, okay, what are the things that are hanging out there in, ideally, in an order of priority? And then maybe we can all have a conversation about them and just see what we think we might be able to move on, what we can't, et cetera, et cetera.
And follow up with that, um, I noticed there was a, um, quite a bit of gravel delivered. Is he required to give us tickets to say how much was in a load? Do you have those tickets, are they, so when they're put with the bill?
Yeah. Yeah, when they're put with the bill, uh, we've started a program where he keeps track of which road and how much gravel goes to each road, something that's.
Cause I noticed it was, I went, so I was just wondering how much, how many loads were.
Yeah, I think, I think it'll be on the bill, if, uh, if we get the bill out, I'm sure that
Okay.
all the information should be specified.
Cause I remember at one point, we discussed when anything was. Cause I remember at one point, we discussed when anything was delivered, there was supposed to be a slip that went with it.
Yep. I'm sure if the slips aren't there, the tally is there, and it tells how many yards and which road. So that we can keep track for, you know, if there's a flood and FEMA wants to know what we're putting on each road, that was a central idea.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just throw it out there generally. Everybody in agreement that that's a sensible thing to do? To have a specific discussion about road projects at the next meeting?
Yes.
And does that sound okay to you, Mark? Does that sound like a good idea? That way we can, we can start to figure out what we can maybe start to do and what we can't.
Whatever, sure.
Any, I'll go around Gwen, any questions for Mark at the moment?
Nope, that's.
You have to ask. Bruce, any questions for Mark at the moment?
No, all set.
Okay. Joseph?
Hello, how you doing?
Joseph, any questions for Mark at the moment?
No.
Shelby, any questions?
No.
Guy, you have a question?
I just, I was, I noticed a lot of gravel went up on Whitney Hill. And during the course of the winter, we had a lot of complaints up there. Have you really improved the road now? You think it's gonna be a lot better?
Well, I do. We added a lot of crushed stone through the whole winter. We started out in late January, I believe, first mud season.
Cause that road is a problem road to begin with.
Right. And and each time we went, we put more crushed stone above and below, and then more over the top. And once the road firmed up and we applied new gravel, the new gravel has more crushed stone in it as well as hopefully better material to compact. So so we then smoothed it off again and created a good crown in the road. So I feel, you know, a great part of our problem is the weather, the temperature.
And some heavy-duty vehicles up there.
Heavy-duty vehicles, and it's stuff that we almost don't have control over, you know.
Well, the reason I ask the question is that I know some people who may be listening are concerned about Whitney Hill Road. And I want them to understand that we have been working toward making a better trip for them.
Yes, we we have applied lots of new fresh material. And I have gotten compliments about the upgrade is, they felt that it was working, so.
Mark, not that we have to get too into this now, but at one point last, earlier in the winter, we had a conversation with Archie also about possibly picking one of the bad spots up on Whitney Hill as sort of a test case to try some of that meshing stuff. I mean, do you, we don't have to decide this now, but is it, do you think that's still possibly worth experimenting with? Or do we think we don't even need that anymore?
No, I I think that there it's mainly certain areas that where the sun during the warmest part of the day beams in and the temperature comes up and it's instant mud. And those would be good areas to definitely try. And so, you know, it doesn't have to be a long section, you know, a hundred, two hundred feet would be a good place to to start where that where that would be. So yes, I feel that's a good, good project. Scraping the gravels to to one side or both sides, putting down this special cloth that, you know, firms the road up. It wouldn't do anything for surface mud, but depth-wise, it will hold the vehicle up. So I I feel it's a good.
Yeah, it seems like it's something we should maybe at least try and work on. Okay, cool. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to ten communications, emails, a couple things. One, we got, Guy, thank you for forwarding it, cause I'm not sure I got it otherwise, the latest census results. And I don't know if people had a chance to look at the census results, but at the moment, as of the last one, it looked like we were a couple percentage points below where we were in twenty-ten. But we're at, we have like a forty-six point eight percent response rate, which is higher than the county as a whole and higher than the vast majority of other towns in our county, but lower than the statewide. And all of that is lower than what it was in twenty-ten. So hopefully, more people as the cards start going out to people or things start getting physically left on people's houses, that number will come up a little bit more. So that was one email that I just wanted to note. And then another one that came that Dot sent today, which I originally thought she'd sent to all of us, but Gwen just pointed out, it only went to Guy, myself, and Joseph. That, I'll just read the whole thing, cause it's not very long. But so it says, "Hi, all," and it's it's been sent to the Wyndham County Humane Society. She says that "Last week, she turned in a stray black hound female. She was in awful condition. I assume Matt Prue claimed her as his dog, as I was sent a video of the dogs at Matt Prue's home by the Vermont State Police, and she was one of the eight dogs there. Vermont State Police troopers and Nancy Libby were at the home on Six Papoose Lane Friday afternoon and contacted me," which is Dot. She goes on to say that "Mr. Prue told me that all of his dogs will be gone by the end of the week, and he therefore was not going to register them here in town. Two Vermont State Police units will be going to his residence at eleven AM on Saturday to inspect it." If the dogs are there, this is, she's writing to the Humane Society. "If the dogs are there, we would like to impound them for municipal violations, including but not limited to living conditions, physical conditions, and lack of registration. Since Brookline contracts with you, I would like to get your advice, support, and possibly have someone from Wyndham County Humane Society also meet the Vermont State Police and myself on Saturday when we do the inspection. We may need cages." So Dot has reached out to Wyndham Humane, I mean, I think for lots of reasons, most notably the care of the dogs. Hopefully, genuinely, the dogs no longer belong to this guy by the end of this week.
Hopefully, geez.
So that's this email that I got from Dot today. So we'll obviously know more once the end of the week has come and dawn. And I'm sure she'll update us, but that's, that's the latest on the Matt Prue dog. Well, I mean, she has state police going, she has, I mean, I'm, she has not asked anyone else of us to go with her that I'm aware of. Okay, so that's, that's it for emails of notes.
That sounds more encouraging than the other things.
Yeah, it's, I mean, in a bad situation, it's maybe at least moving in a somewhat better way, hopefully.
That's good.
There's no regular mail at all. And then moving on, which moves us on to eleven pay orders.
Hey, David.
Yes, Joseph.
I probably should have brought this up at changes to the agenda, but since we were just speaking about this whole dog situation, would like to bring up something that I suppose could be labeled as the the driving situation in town. Well, thanks, thanks for the comment, Bruce. I think that I think that our long drawn-out rants about the driving are of a pretty great consequence to a lot of the people in town. And I've spoken to a couple dozen residents that, as of what I'm sure many of you have seen happen last week, a lot of people are really having a hard time dealing with their neighbors there, the Prues. And I would assume, did everyone see what happened? I'm not sure if you guys drive, yeah, that impressive road.
The tire marks.
Must have been a whole set of tires.
Yeah.
And say, how did they have any tread left?
So then.
So, yeah, so sorry. So what's the follow-up to that?
Well, I mean, a lot of people are just curious what we can, what we can do to do with residents like this. Because they did all the, those burnouts and between like one and one forty-five in the morning. And that woke up, you know, half a dozen of their neighbors, half of them are are older people that are, that are scared. I've spoken with many of them personally, one of them is someone that's close to me. And they're terrified to call the police because they they fear retribution from their neighbor. They also shooting their their guns at, I've heard several occasions that they were shooting firearms at like eleven-thirty at night. The dogs, it doesn't need anymore talking on that point, we know about it. But what I've been hearing from from people is they're they're really scared. Some of them are angry that we aren't doing more. And I I think that we are doing everything that's within our power. A lot of people have brought up again and again, we should contract with the law enforcement agency. Should we get a constable? Should we have a noise ordinance? Just all sorts of stuff. And I just wanted to to bring it up as a topic because I've never, I've never seen this much of what I guess I would call a a crisis in the town that's that's affecting so many people and and they're really scared and upset and having a hard time living their lives.
Joseph, Marriott?
Yep.
Okay, let's start with the noise ordinance.
So here's a, here's a thing I'm gonna mention, guys. This is not on the agenda at all. So we're, we need to be fairly limited in the the extent to which we discuss this.
I apologize, I I really should have brought this up on the agenda.
Yeah, and it's whatever, there's there's some latitude, and we can, we can have some conversations about it, but it just, we need to be.
If I may, I've.
Hang on a second.
The Vermont State.
Hang on, Bruce, hang on. Bruce, 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 let Guy have, let Guy weigh in for one quick second here, okay? Please.
Lately, there's been a lot of state police presence in the town. They are totally aware of the situation on Turtle Drive. We have an animal control officer who's also been very proactive in regards to the individual on Turtle Drive. The town is, I could understand the town being upset. I had one of the residents come to our office who was just totally, I thought she was gonna have a heart attack. She was so upset and everything else, and I explained to her that we're doing the best we can. One individual doesn't dictate changing the flavor of the town. But the bottom line is that, the bottom line is that we are, the town is very proactive. They don't see it because they're not around, but the state police have been here, they've been notified, and they're doing everything in their power to minimize this and to eliminate it. So it's gonna have to play out unfortunately. The other thing is that people must make complaints. If you don't complain, you can't get any action. The complaints must go to the state police or the sheriff's department because the town doesn't have that responsibility. So I, you know, I understand. We have one or two individuals in a town of five hundred people that are making it hell for us. I wish they would change their address and go away, but right now, they're still here. We do have some other recourse that we may be able to do. We can speak to the landlord, there's other things we can do. But when people approach you and say, what is the town doing, what, you know, we need an ordinance and so forth, let them know that the town is doing everything in its power.
But if people don't file a complaint, there's a disadvantage, one, two. We can, back in twenty-fourteen, we went to noise ordinance room. You don't wanna go into that composition. I still have this stuff in my inbox or in my inbox holder. Bring that subject up, see where I get you. Noise ordinance is like saying that, well, we're not gonna make correlations, cause it's the end of the year. But there's a, I agree with everything that Guy had to say, and there's no explanation involved in it. But basically, what Guy has said, other than a strong enough emphasis on people aren't complaining, they're not filing complaints, they're afraid to make a complaint, they're afraid to make a complaint, what do they expect this law board to do?
Well, but that's, Bruce, Bruce, yeah, but, but well, but to some extent, we are. I mean, we are.
Responsibility to the safety being of the people.
We have the, well, I mean, we have the responsibility as the constable of the town, which some people interpret that as though we are law enforcement. I mean, we know we are not a body of law enforcement, and what we can do and what anyone can do is refer things to actual law enforcement like the state police, but they have processes. And they require complaints from people in many instances, which is unfortunate, but does complicate the matter. But I mean, I I have sympathy for people who are afraid of the person and therefore don't wanna, don't wanna go on record. That's, you know, that, that's not their fault that they've unfortunately ended up in this situation. I mean, I guess I would suggest, for transparency sake, we could, we could put something on the agenda for next time to discuss ideas of what can be done when a situation like this occurs.
Or craft a letter to the state police.
I'm not, I mean, I'll say that I, you know, I've contacted the state police and spoke to the head of the Westminster Barracks a few months ago about this individual. And at the time, what I was told was that they basically had no real reports of anything. And essentially, if people had problems, they needed to contact the state police. So, you know, there, it's, it's a challenge. But I mean, Joseph, I guess I'll go, again, we'll put it, we can put it on the agenda to discuss. But what, like, what do you think we should do?
I'd, I'd, I'd like to speak that, myself bringing this up, I hope nobody takes this as me trying to push a noise ordinance or trying to say we need to do anything rash. I simply think we need to have a discussion. I have recently spoken with the the leader of the Westminster VSP barracks. I think things are moving forward. People do need to make complaints. But I I also have spoken with the residents at at whatever that address is there. We all know who we're talking about. And they, I think, I guess the one thing I would say I think we should do is we should put it on the agenda. And I I don't, I don't wanna sound, I don't wanna run the risk of of sounding like a bully here, but I almost feel that we should call it as it is and and almost put this on the agenda as the specific issue that it is. This isn't, we don't have, we don't necessarily have a reckless driving problem in the town. We don't have a shooting at night problem in the town. We have, we have one person in the problem town.
Although I guess, can I, sorry, can we just pause for a second, though? I will say that several weeks ago, we had multiple discussions about reckless driving in the town that I'm not sure involved this person at that point. At least, no one ever told me that that's who this was.
Yeah, at the time, and and sure, we do have more than one person who's who's driving too fast and doing burnout in the town. And at the time, I wasn't entirely aware of this. But I think for the last several months, a large portion of our reckless driving in this town has come from these residents here. So, yeah, sure, there are people who make too much noise at night and break other laws and are disrespectful of their neighbors, but it is disproportionately against residents of this address. And and I think that we need to, if we have this discussion, we need to have it directly. And we have, as Guy said. directly and uh, we have, as Guy said, we got like five hundred people or whatever in this town and um, and just a few of them living at the same place are being unbelievably disrespectful. They're hostile, they're aggressive. I mean, we we live in Brookline, Vermont and there's, and there's more than one resident that's afraid that their neighbor is going to take violent repercussions against them if they contact the state police. That is, that, I mean, that's, that's what I said just a few moments ago. They're afraid of repercussions and I, I don't know how to, I don't, I don't think that it's possible really to overstate the severity of that. It's, it, it's not, it's not a feud between two residents. It's one person that's acting so aggressive and hostile that when they're approached, I mean, I I would assume Dot's had similar experiences. Uh, when they're approached, they get uh borderline violent and um
Yeah.
and uh, it's, it's absolutely uh ridiculous and we, we are doing everything that we can as the town. Um, and I don't think we should do anything like annoy someone, but I think we have to have a different um discussion about it and maybe, maybe if it's possible, the town, the select board could uh maybe I don't know the legality of all of this, but maybe draft some sort of uh open letter to, to these specific residents, because it, it, it's a severe problem.
Well, we can, we can discuss it, but I just wanna make one point. We went to the noise ordinance room, and I quite took I, I initiated it and I wanted it and I still want it. I think it's a great idea. We looked at other towns, I'm not gonna go on. So if you're looking for a way to noise ordinance, you're coming to the right place, but um.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just gonna do that. I'm just saying that, that's one of the things that has been brought up by one or two
Other people.
uh residents of the town and so.
That, I said, that's in a whole tree and the parents do that, but I'll tell you, you're asking for a riot, but hey I got narrow shoulders, I can't, looks for wanting to go that route. I've got all the paperwork on it from other towns, I've stopped it.
We're not.
That we had citizen that's in uh, in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, I still have the information.
Okay, and we're not, there's, there's nothing, and that's not going to be on the agenda for next time. What's gonna be on the agenda for next time is just a, a discussion about Six Papoose Lane, basically. About the situation at Six Papoose Lane and
Okay.
you know, I, I suggest everyone take a little bit of time in the meantime and give some thought to what they think may or may not be constructive.
This sadly may change some things.
It may. Well, yeah, it, it, it may change some things, but yeah.
I wonder if, if.
Alright, and that's gonna be the end of that, cause again, that was something that was completely not on our agenda.
Bees, would be good idea.
Some ideas we'll talk about after.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Um, alright, so now we are moving on to pay orders. Um, first up is the accounts payable warrant, which I signed on the twenty fifth. Um, we'll do our usual thing and just go around.
You mean payroll?
Uh, payroll. Did I say accounts payroll? Sorry, I meant payroll. Um, Gwen, have you reviewed the payroll warrants?
Yes.
Uh, do you have any questions?
No.
Bruce, have you reviewed the payroll warrants? And do you have any questions? Okay.
Yes, I did and no, I had no questions.
Excellent. Uh, Joseph, have you reviewed the payroll warrant and do you have any questions?
Um, I'm trying to find it and read it now, so let's say circle that.
Uh, it just got sent earlier today, the scan of it, along with the accounts payable. They were both sent together by uh this morning, I guess. Uh, got sent by Sarah. Um, Shelby, I'll, I'll jump to you. Have you looked at the payroll warrant and do you have any questions about it?
Uh, yeah, looked at it, no questions.
Okay. Joseph, have you been able to find it?
Yeah, I, I just reviewed it, no questions.
Okay. Um, alright, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant two zero two zero dash four eight dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty, in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Is there a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Bruce. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving payroll warrant two zero two zero dash four eight dated May twenty seventh, twenty twenty, in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents. Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Alright, payroll warrant is approved. Now moving on to the accounts payable warrant. Uh, we'll go around again. Gwen, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
Yes and no.
Yes, you've reviewed it. No, you don't have any questions. Thank you. Bruce, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
Yes, I have and no, I don't.
Okay. Um, Shelby, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
I'm, I distributed, no questions.
Okay. Uh, Joseph, have you reviewed the accounts payable warrant and do you have any questions?
Yes, I have, no questions.
Okay. Um, alright, then I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant two zero two zero dash four nine, dated June third, twenty twenty, in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-three cents. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Bruce.
I'm just waiting.
Any, any further discussion? Nobody wants to compete with you, I think is what it is.
I can understand that.
Hearing done. All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant two zero two zero dash four nine dated June third, twenty twenty, in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-three cents. Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Uh, then the accounts payable warrant is also approved. Um, moving on to agenda for next time. So we'll have an agenda item to discuss the Six Papoose Lane situation. Um, we will have an agenda item to discuss road projects. Um, and I will invite Archie to be a part of that as well. Uh, Bruce, I assume we'll have a Suzie's Little Peanuts update?
Yeah, probably not too much, cause things under control, so, yes.
Okay. Um, any other agenda item? I guess we'll put on a tax collection update again.
Yeah.
Just to touch base on that. Uh, Gwen, any other agenda items you can think of?
Not that I can think of.
Bruce, any other agenda items you can think of at the moment?
No.
Uh, Joseph, any other agenda items you can think of?
No.
Shelby, any other agenda items you can think of?
No, um, I think that we could have sent the agenda the night out if there are any responses back from the survey, but
Oh, okay, yeah.
it's a full agenda, so I'd rather, we can leave it up, we can leave it off tentatively and I'll break, and if I have anything, I'll bring it up at the beginning of the meeting.
That sounds great. Cool, thank you. Um, okay, then I would like to make a motion that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded again by Bruce. Everything tonight, it's clean sweep. Uh, any discussion? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned at seven fifty-one.